Good morning, I hope you are all fine today. We are beginning the special session macro family of the second Brazilian meeting in family engineering economics. Today we will be Caesar and Paulina. Good morning Caesar and Paulina, thank you for accepting this invitation. Today, I'm more than happy to be chair of this session, especially because during my PhD I was Caesar's TA. And now I have the opportunity to introduce him. And also I spent a year of my PhD at the Federal Reserve Bank of San Luis and I had the opportunity to cross paths with Paulina at that time. Maybe coincidence of life or maybe not. So, uh, let me introduce them. Paulina is a senior economist at the research department of the Federal Reserve Bank of San Luis. Her areas of research are international macroeconomics and certain matching labor and married markets. Her work has been published in American Economic Review, Journal of Economic Theory and the European Economic Review among others. She received her PhD in economics from UCLA in 2010. Now let me introduce Caesar. Caesar is an associate professor of Jatulio Vargas Foundation and a research economist at the Bank of Portugal. His areas of research are macroeconomics, development, labor and family economics. His work has been published in Economática, American Economic Review, Journal of Economic Dynamics and Control. He received his PhD from UPenn in 2012. Before the talks, I'll read the disclaimer message, okay? All statements expressed by Jatulio Vargas Foundation employees and guests in our online events and broadcasts represent their opinions exclusively and not necessarily FGV's institution position. We also reiterated that everyone present here agreed to participate in this event of their own free will and they consented to be recorded in this broadcast, which will be posted later on Jatulio Vargas official channels. So without further ado, the floor is yours Caesar and Paulina and I hope we have a wonderful presentation.
Uh, who goes first? You're me.
Caesar, yes.
Oh, it's me, oh, okay.
Yes.
Alright, thank you so much for, for the introduction and the invitation and the nice introduction. Lucieni was a great TA and she was also a great co-author. We also have a paper together on family economics. So it was a pleasure to work with Lucieni. Alright, so let me share my screen. I hope you can see it here. Um, so I'm going to present a paper, um, that the, the connection to family, so the session is on macro family. It definitely has some macro in it and the, and the family aspect is that I'm going to focus is demographics, okay? So, um, people of different demographic groups making different decisions. Um, so I'm going to present an economic model of the COVID-19 pandemic with young and old agents, behavior testing and policy. So this is co-authored work with Louise, Philip and Michelle. Um, so that doesn't work, okay? So of course, we're all living on COVID, uh, during the COVID-19 pandemic. And that's why we're all doing this over Zoom. It was a big pandemic, hit everyone. Maybe an aggregate chocolate has ever seen one, but there are a few idiosyncratic aspects to it, in particular when it comes to age. So I guess the most, um, uh, visual aspect of that age matters here is that the differential death rates of, um, of, uh, of different age groups, but also we observe different behavior externalities from one group to the other, maybe some policy impact as well as we'll see today. There's also been an emphasis on testing, um, because people are uncertain about their infectious status. And people change their behavior, um, they socially distance even without policy, uh, people socially distance. So we want to put all of that together to think about different types of policies that focus, um, particularly on the different demographic groups. So in order to do that, we model, we develop a model of behavior in complete information so that testing is important, uh, in age. We're going to calibrate the model to, uh, the COVID, the US COVID-19 pandemic and evaluate different policy experiments. Now, the paper is very, very long, uh, despite our best efforts. Uh, so let me give you a little bit of, uh, the insights of what's in the paper that for sure I won't have, uh, time, uh, to go over everything. Um, I'm going to try to give you a description about, about the ingredients of the model, so not necessarily going into too much technicality hopefully. Um, and then I'll talk about different, uh, insights that we get from them. So to give you a preview of that, so the benchmark model in the benchmark here is a pandemic, it's an unchecked pandemic. Um, in this unchecked pandemic benchmark, individuals, especially the old, shield themselves a lot. So they've socially distanced a lot even without any, uh, policy being implemented. And we observed that deaths would go down 80% just by people changing their behavior. So which is the crucial point of economics is to study behavior, so just without any Now, we also look at policy, so we look at, for instance, optimal lockdown. What if a social planner decides, uh, on an, on an optimal lockdown? So what to observe is that it starts very strict, it's a very strict lockdown that lasts very long until a vaccine comes along. Uh, and it's essentially a no COVID strategy, so the optimal lockdown here, um, decreases deaths by 99%, it's welfare improving for all, young and old. There is a crucial thing about these lockdowns, including the optimal lockdown, which is locking the old, which is a very, uh, popular idea both in academia and policy circles, which as well, if old people don't work and they are more at risk of the disease, well, let's lock them and let the young go out and about and produce output. It turns out that that's not optimal. Not in the optimal lockdown, and if we restrict, um, the policy, we do lock the old and let the young go out and work, it does save lives. Such a policy does save lives, but it decreases the utility of the old. Because, um, the old already shield themselves a lot. So if you tell them to shield themselves even more, lock them even more, uh, that decreases their utility. Uh, I'll be more precise about the intuition for that later on. We also evaluate other policies like testing, uh, so telling people that they are sick actually brings deaths down. The reason is that in our model, people are altruistic, so they care about others. Um, and testing and quarantining the positives, uh, is even better, okay? Um, again, I won't have time to talk about all of that, um. So usually, um, at this stage in our short talk, I would skip this slide. Uh, but given that this is like a macro family thing, I think we give a little bit of, 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 uh, background of where this literature comes from. So if you've picked any, any of our working papers, C R working papers, whatever, in the last year or so, you've seen tons of COVID papers. But it turns out that economics and infectious diseases, they have been married before COVID. I think the seminal paper was Kramer, uh, 96, which is a theory paper, it's not an RCT. It's a theory paper in which Kramer studies the behavioral, uh, the impact of behavioral change on the HIV epidemic. Um, so he talks about, you know, what I just talked about here, like individuals changing their behavior matters a lot. So he talks about it in theory. Now several years have passed, there have been some papers on, uh, quantitative papers on infectious diseases and, and, uh, uh, economics. So this paper is like the similar set of authors of the current paper that I'm presenting here, um, has a calibrated model, macro model, uh, for HIV AIDS in Africa. But now with COVID, we've seen a bunch of them, right? So we've seen two very famous papers, I can bond rebuilding for Bond and for Budi Yarosh and Schimer, which is critical is that they do have behavior, they do bring economics at the crux of the argument, but they don't have age distribution. So the demographic aspect that I want to talk about here is absent from these papers. Then there are some papers like Asimoglu et al., Global et al., that they do the polar opposite thing. They do have age, but they don't have behavior. And as I told you in the previous slide, turns out that modeling behavior, like, you know, we like to do in family economics, turns out to be crucial quantitatively. Okay, there are many, many, many other works in economics in COVID, but let me tell you, uh, what we do here. So what I'm going to do now, um, I'm going to give you an idea of the model. Um, hopefully I won't go into too much technicality, but I'm happy to answer questions about it. Um, and then I'll tell you about the, uh, going into the detail of the insights that we get out of. So the model, uh, it's in discreet time, there are different age groups, as I said, young and old. Think about young here, people that work and old people are the retired people, below and above 65, let's say. And people have different health status, they might be susceptible, so this is a person that might get the disease, it's healthy, might get the disease. You might be infected, which you have the disease and you know it, and it might be recovered. So this three letters, S, I and R, these are the famous S I R model. But we're going to enrich it a little bit, okay? So here I said, you know, you infected and you know you're infected, but if everyone knows they're infected, there's no reason to test anybody. If that's an information that everyone knows, there's no reason to test people. So we're going to add some uncertainty about this status and I'm going to have this type of people called the quote unquote fever people. So these are people that they get some signal and they aren't sure whether they have COVID or they might have something else. Who knows, okay? But you do know if you get tested. And infected people might recover or they might need to go to ICU in the hospital. If they do go to the hospital, again, they can recover, they may die. And if people recover, they're immune forever, which is something that it's probably not true for, uh, COVID. But we're going to look at like a year and a half, um, time span here and maybe that's not so bad. And, you know, there's going to be some testing probability. All of these probabilities here that are in, uh, orange are may depend on age, okay? And here we're going to make a very simple assumption, which is after, um, a year and a half, a vaccine comes along and it's a perfect vaccine. Everyone gets vaccinated right away, gets vaccinated right away and it's a perfect vaccine, so the pandemic is over, okay? Alright, so what do people do, right? I was talking about people making decisions, so what, what, what do they do? They have one unit of time, they can, they decide to work outside. They can telework, which, uh, what I'm doing here. They can enjoy leisure outside, like going to a football match or going to the pub. Or can they, they can enjoy leisure at home, like watching Netflix, domestic leisure, the D. If you do go outside, um, you need to buy some goods and spend some time outside so that you enjoy things. So my example here is that, you know, if you want to go to a pub, you only get utility if you also buy a beer. Okay, so X is beer, L is time at the pub. So, um, there's no point in going to the pub and not getting a beer, there's no point in getting a beer if I'm not going to the pub, okay? The idea here is that this time that you go to a pub, you might want, that, that might be like a supply side thing, like you don't want to go and X, like the beer that I buy is a demand side thing, but I'm not going to get into these details today. Alright, and then there's the utility, um, so you enjoy consumption, uh, you enjoy this like good G that, you know, it's beer and time together at the pub, you enjoy Netflix. Let's keep this thing for a second and, um, your guys' faces are on top of this, but I believe you can see a B, uh, over here, um, I can't. Uh, so this B is, um, is the utility of life that you get just by being alive, that you get on top of, of this consumption. Okay, so this is important to like, you know, make you want to live and make you want to avoid actually, you know, getting COVID and dying. Now note that these guys here, D and Z, these are things that you do at home. D is domestic leisure, that's Netflix, and V is teleworking. So these are things that you do at home, you don't have to go outside. So your utility might change, you might prefer staying at home more, either doing teleworking or watching Netflix because maybe you were found to be infected. So you know you're infected, you don't want to go outside, so your utility of staying at home goes up because you're altruistic. You know you're infected, you know that you can infect people, you don't want to infect people because you're altruistic, then your utility of staying at home goes up. The other one here, note that there's a P here, that's for policy. So this is how we can engineer lockdowns or quarantines. So if the government wants to lock people down, the way we're going to operationalize this in the model is by jacking up this lambda P. You know that this lambda P may depend on age, so I can lock down the old, but not the young or vice versa, okay? I can depend also on your type, maybe I want to lock, if I can, if the planner, the government knows that, I can lock down only the people that are found to be infected. Okay? Um, and then the old, where, where does money come from? Old, they just get some money, double you, but it just falls out of the sky, okay? So this is like a pension savings, a retirement saving, whatever, just falls out of the sky. What's more interesting is that young people, they need to work for your money, so they can go outside. Okay, that's in, uh, but that's risky because you might get infected when the pandemic is around. Um, and you can also telework. But the productivity of telework depends on how much telework we do. So, you know, maybe like Paulina and I, we are research economists at the Central Bank, we don't even have to teach anybody, so we can just write our papers from home. Okay, so maybe having us be, uh, at home is not so costly. But as you move more and more activities at home, it starts to become less and less productivity. Think about, you know, a, a, an aerodynamic engineer who have a hard, very hard time building an airplane in their backyard, right? So the productivity of, of, uh, of, of teleworking goes down as more and more telework is done. Alright, so, um, let me just tell you about how we model infections and then I'll go, I'll skip some technicalities and go to the results. So remember, N is time outside, L is leisure outside, so these are things that you do outside. When you go outside, you might get infected. Um, and the more time you spend outside, the more likely you are to be infected. Uh, either with COVID, which is this, and I'll talk about in a second, or a common cold. You know, and you might get a cold, you start sneezing and you don't know whether it's COVID or not. Now, the COVID transmission probability depends on whether we have people outside that are sick. Okay, so if everyone that's sick is at home and you go outside, you're not going to get sick, okay? So, so in that sense, this is an equilibrium outcome, okay? How, if I get, um, uh, infected or not, it depends on what other people are doing and vice versa, and there's going to be a macro equilibrium, macro family, okay? Um, alright, so, and, um, as, as the next speaker is an expert in search, this is random search, but we also play around a little bit by some selective mixing. Like instead of people, uh, meeting others randomly, they might meet people with some characteristics, specifically age, more likely than not. So maybe young people are more likely to meet young people outside, old people are more likely to meet old people outside. We have that in the model in a very simple way, but I'm not going to talk about this today. Alright, so how this, what, what role does age play in our model? So for, just, just taking stock of things. So first, the old don't work, so they naturally spend more time at home. Uh, they only go outside for leisure. Um, COVID-19 is more risky for the old people. They have a higher probability of hospitalization, and once in the hospital, they have a higher chance of dying. So because they don't have to work outside, their income is, is given. And COVID is more, um, uh, risky for them. They stay, they, they change, and this is a quantitative set and I want to show you some graphs, they decide to stay at home more voluntarily, without the, the planner doing anything. Okay, they also have a higher chance from natural, dying from natural causes. We put this here because some people have talked about the possibility that, you know, old people become fatalistic. I'm going to die anyway, whether it's COVID or whatever, so I might as well just enjoy life. So, okay, so we add this possibility here, it does play some role quantitative, but not that much. Alright, um, so let me skip a bunch of Bellman equations and value functions, so you can see that in the paper. And, uh, what we're going to solve for is a rational expectations equilibrium, okay? So people are going to make the individual optimization, people of different demographic groups, and we're going to aggregate them all in equilibrium. In that sense, you know, it's a macro model with different demographic groups. Alright, so we're going to calibrate this model to the US economy. The model period is one week, instead of showing your parameters, let me show you what this model looks like. Um, so, um, if you've been following COVID-19 and who hasn't, you know, you've become familiar with what the R zero or the R naught is. Um, and it turns out thankfully that for, uh, COVID didn't used to be that, that high, so 2.5, measles is like 12. Uh, but maybe some of the variants that we talk about, uh, you know, Delta variant stuff, they might be more, more infectious, this means, you know, a, a, a higher R zero. We make sure that the model is consistent with, uh, the fraction of people that, uh, need hospital care, critical care, and also out of those that aren't critical care, what's the likelihood that they die, and we do this by age. Um, alright, so we also, um, remember that I said that we want people to be altruistic. Now this is a hard thing to pin down, you know, how altruistic are we? Um, so there are some studies that followed other pandemics, uh, like H1N1 pandemics, and they asked people, you know, if, if you're found, uh, H1N1 positive and the doctor tells you to stay home, will you? And everyone answers yes, I will, and that would be a terrible target, uh, to, to match. Um, we found a couple of studies that follow up and it turns out that people don't do what they say they will do. Uh, so we match that number, which turns out about 50, there's an increase in about 50% of their time that they stay at home. Um, remember that I said that in our model, people are allowed to work from home. Uh, but as more and more work is done from home, the productivity of telework goes down. But how do we match that? Turns out that in the data, people work from home even in normal times, even before pandemics, okay? So about eight hours a week, on average, people spend working from home. So we match that. Another thing that we match is, um, when to get like this low, how, how productivity goes down, what we match is the following. In the second quarter of last year, uh, GDP went down 10%, so that's the 10 here. Uh, so GDP goes down 10%, and around that time, uh, we had 36% of US workers working from home, so that's what we match. So anyway, there are a lot more things that I don't have time to talk about. Alright, so let me show you some results, so I'm going to show you, uh, I'm, I'm going to try to do things with graphs because I have tables, but they look variable. Um, so this, the dashed line here, this is what we call back in our HIV work, but also here, that's what we call the epidemiological model. So an epidemiologist, and this is like an unfair way to call, you know, the models that epidemiologists use. Because epidemiologists, they have models that are extremely complicated, a lot of transitions across all kinds of states, which we don't have in economics. But they don't have behavior. And what I'm going to show you here is that behavior matters a lot. So this dashed line, these are the, what, the different things, I'll tell you what they are. In a world in which the pandemic comes along and people don't change their behavior at all, they behave as if there is no pandemic. And the solid lines, these are our benchmark in which people do change their behavior in response to the riskiness of a pandemic. Okay, and we have two colors because of the two demographic groups, so blue is young, orangey is old. So the first thing, the first graph here, this is infections over time. So you can see that the dashed line, infections go up a lot and they decrease very fast. And the pandemic is done in like six months, okay? The reason for that is that everyone gets it, not everyone, but let me, let me give you the number, about three quarters of the population get sick, okay? Now, and this is log scale, okay, so these differences here are very big. Okay, so one thing that we can see is that the amount of people that get infected goes down substantially just because these people change what they're doing, there's no policy here, there's no lockdowns, it's just people changing what they're doing, they're socially distancing more. Now who socially distances more, young or old people? And I don't have a graph that I wanted to show you, but you can see this from, uh, the middle graph, this is the measure of people that die, okay? And you can see that, uh, blue, which is young, there's a decline in the, uh, amount of young people that die. But the, the, the decline in the number of deaths among old people is a lot bigger, okay? Uh, and the reason is because old people, uh, change a lot more what they're doing, a lot more, they socially distance a lot more, they spend a lot more time at home compared to young people when the pandemic, uh, is around, okay? See that old people change a lot. Decline a lot, okay? Now, because young people also socially distance some, you can see that, you know, they die in smaller numbers and old, and young people are the ones that are producing output, GDP goes down, GDP goes down a lot, about 10%, GDP goes up 13% at the peak of the pandemic, so at the trough here, GDP is a 13% change and it starts to recover. Okay? Now, um, there are a lot of differences that I mentioned in the beginning between young and old people. Uh, old people are more likely, uh, to die from the disease, they don't have to work, so we can play, we can, we can use a model, we can use our macro model to decompose this thing. Okay, so, um, I, I'm not going to go into all of these numbers, uh, but this is, you know, this is in the paper in which, you know, because we have a model, it can let, uh, old people behave as if they think they're young people, but they're not. So you can have these counterfactors done in the model and actually it turns out to, uh, play a big role in state. Alright, so I don't know how much time I have. Um, I'm, I'm going to guess 35 minutes, so that will be what, uh, eight more minutes? So let me tell you a little bit about the policies, uh, that we do. Um, so first things, a, a more, more philosophical thing. So our measure of success of a policy, this is relative to the benchmark that I showed you here, okay? The, the solid lines, so it's a benchmark in which people do make behavioral changes. Um, and not the epidemiological world in which people don't change their behavior no matter what's going on outside. Uh, now the choice of this reference point is very important. It turns out that most lockdown policies are welfare improving if your reference point is this epidemiological version of the model in which people don't change their behavior. But if you take into account the fact that people do change their behavior, a lot of lockdown policies that we experiment with are actually welfare decreasing, okay? So this reference point is very important. It turns out that this distinguishes this paper from other papers that also look at, uh, age groups, uh, different age groups like Asimoglu et al. and Global et al. Alright, so let me show you the optimal lockdown. So imagine that we have a social planner that can send young people or old people to stay at home more, um, to curb the, the, the disease, but it knows that it will have an effect on GDP, what would this planner do? So on the left-hand side graph here, you have the measure of infected people. Uh, and the dashed line here now is our benchmark, an unchecked pandemic, and the solid lines are the optimal policy. So it turns out, as you can see, infections essentially are zero. So this planner is going for a no COVID strategy, maybe it's, I don't know, Australia, New Zealand or something, okay? So this one is going for a no COVID strategy. It turns out that this is quite costly, okay, to bring, um, the pandemic into control. To bring, um, the pandemic into control, you know, in the beginning, the very beginning, it's very tough. Okay, so you can see GDP drops a lot. And GDP stays lower than the benchmark for quite a while, and it eases here as the, um, vaccine gets closer and closer. Okay, that's what the, the planner does. But what's more striking, different from these other papers, is how the planner does that. Remember that a lot of policy, the Brazilian president was advocating this, uh, that we should lock the old people and let the young people produce. Okay, this is something that you also find, for instance, in Asimoglu et al.'s paper. Would the planner do this here? And the answer is no. Um, let's look at the right-hand side. So this is the time that people spend outside every week, okay? Um, dashed line again is what people would do with no policy intervention whatsoever. And the solid line is what the planner tells them to do. So let's look at the young people first. So the young people would like to spend, you know, this much time outside. You can see my mouse, right, I hope, uh, the dashed line here. Okay, and then the planner says, no, this is too much time outside. Uh, and this contributes a lot to the pandemic, so you need to spend less time outside. So it goes down like this. Okay, so it's a lockdown, young people have to stay more time at home, okay? But old people, that's different. Old people within the presence of pandemic, they would like to, you know, stay down here. And the planner says, it's okay if you actually spend more time outside. So what the planner is doing compared to benchmark is the opposite of, you know, Bolsonaro said, which is the planner is actually restricting the young more than the old. Okay, now, this is not to say that the old are not restricted. Because in a world with no pandemic, which is essentially this, with such a strong lockdown, such a strict lockdown, in a world with no pandemic, the old people would like to spend even more time outside. That's the dotted line here. But actually, the, the planner says, no, I'm gonna restrict you a little bit. Okay? So why is that? Why is it the case that, uh, all, that the planner wants old people to allow old people to stay at home less and tell the young people that are the ones that are producing output to stay at home more? The reason is that twofold. One, the old are a smaller group of the population. Okay, so if they're 20% of the adult population in the US. So if they are a smaller group of the population and they already spend less time outside, they don't contribute so much to the pandemic. And because they are more at risk and they take precautions, they don't impose a lot of externalities. Okay, so that, that is the main reason. The two reasons, the smaller size and the fact that they, uh, already, think about the following. Imagine that there's only, in, in 330 million people in the US, there's one old person. Okay? Whatever that one old person is doing, that has got to be optimal. Because it's one person in a sea of 300 million people, there's no externality there. Okay, it's a measure zero person, okay? Now, it's not 0%, it's 20%, but they also spend less time outside anyway because they don't have to work. So they don't impose a lot of externality. Okay, so that's why, uh, the planner does that. So, so again, this is very different, uh, than what has been said in other papers and in, in, uh, policy circles. Uh, and the reason for this is that we take into account the utility of old people, right? So we have, um, a concave utility function for old people. So there is a convex cost of sending people to stay at home, okay? And for instance, let me just speak on one paper, Nassimoglu's paper, old people don't have utility. So you can send them to stay at home and they don't care. Okay, but in our, in, in our work, you know, old people, they do, uh, have some utility of going outside. Alright, um, so we do a lot of lockdowns, different lockdowns that I don't have time to talk about. Um, okay, let, let me say two more things and then I'll finish. Um, so in different lockdowns, you know, they affect different people differently, right? I already said, you know, locking up the old, the young loves that, the old not so much. Maybe this can explain why there's so much political debate, help explain why there's so much political debate. Again, what I said before, you know, all policies, virtually all policies, or maybe all of them, that we checked are wealth improving relative to a world in which people don't make behavioral changes. Okay? Uh, and then, you know, I already talked about this, that, you know, uh, the reason why old people, locking up people are not a bad idea. Now, here, the planner is going for a no Covid strategy. There's one assumption that is key for this result, which is the ability to telework. If we shut down this ability, everyone in order to work needs to go outside, the lockdown is still very strict, it's a lot more costly because we're gonna lose a lot more GDP. But it's not a no Covid strategy anymore. Because going for a no Covid strategy would be way too costly since people cannot, uh, produce from home. Okay? Uh, okay, and, you know, again, way too many numbers in this slide. Let me just say in words that, you know, testing people actually, uh, is very, uh, useful, especially if you quarantine the positive tests. Um, and here we even have like a world that's 100%. This is not 100% of, you know, it's not 300 million tests, uh, in the US. This is, uh, everyone that's like the fever, someone that has, you know, some indication of the disease. You can think about it as like a perfect contract tracing scheme. This would still amount to about, you know, less than 5% of the US adult population being tested every week, which would be 15 million, oh, uh, three, yeah, 15, about 15 million tests, which is now, it's not completely crazy. But even like 50% of testing, which would be 2% of the, testing 2% of the US population every week, which would be about 6 million tests, but quarantining the positives, uh, still declines, uh, deaths and infections by a lot. In the left slide, what if we could pair the two policies? What if we could pair, uh, not, search for an optimal lockdown in a world in which there is testing, quarantining, in which we do test people, we do quarantine the positives? How would the optimal lockdown look like? First, it would still be a no Covid strategy, that, that's easy to see. You know, if you didn't have this, the, the testing option, you'd still go for no Covid? If I give you an extra policy instrument, you're for sure, want to go for the no Covid strategy. But this lockdown can be a lot less strict. You can see here on the right-hand side that, you know, for both young and old people, the planner allows them to spend a lot more time outside than in the, the optimal lockdown without testing. And you can see also that in the macro agreements, output goes down 2% relative to the benchmark, 10% relative to the optimal lockdown without testing. So combining these things, lockdown, testing, quarantines, seem to be quite, uh, important, um, quantitative work. So as I said, we have a lot more scenarios, but I'm already out of time. Uh, you know, this is a model of behaviorist testing. Two main things, behavior matters a lot, and when you look at policy, you need to take that into account. And once you take that into account and you look for policy, you might reach very different conclusions. Like, for instance, an optimal lockdown, you want to reduce activities by the young, not by the old. Okay? That's it, thanks. Have questions, or if you're, if you're gonna leave questions for the end, it's all up to you.
Maybe we can postpone the questions to the end, and we can have now Paulina.
Okay, so I want to thank you again for the invitation. I'm very happy to be here, and I'm also very happy to see you soon, and I haven't seen her in a long time. So, uh, that's good. So we're going to have quite a bit of a change of, uh, topic here, basically. Uh, so this is a new paper, uh, completely new. Uh, so we'll see, um, how it goes, but we're quite excited about it. So this is joint work with Anton Charanmogin, who's actually here with us. And with Antonella Totino, they're both at the Dallas Fed. So, um, the usual disclaimer applies. None of the, you know, views expressed here represent the views of the Federal Reserve Bank of San Luis, Dallas, or the system, uh, overall. So I'm going to be talking about whether, you know, like, we tend to think that finding your better half nowadays is easier than it has ever been, but is it really, you know? And this is mainly because, um, I think that there's no doubt in our minds that search frictions in all markets have gone down over time. And this is especially true because we know that, you know, technology, especially smartphones with all the apps and, you know, all the search platforms and so on, have made it very easy for us to have a lot of information readily available in our, in our hands, basically. And if we specifically think about this in terms of the marriage or the dating market, what would we expect? We would expect that given this, uh, reduction in search frictions, we would see more and better matches, uh, occurring. And it turns out that when we think about other markets, so not only marriage and dating markets, but when we look at labor and consumer product markets specifically, for example, this has not happened. What do I mean by that? So if we look at the labor markets, we don't see that there are fewer unemployed and fewer vacancies. So this relationship between unemployed and unemployment and vacancies, which we call the Beveridge curve, what we would have expected is to see it shift inwards towards the origin. And we're not seeing that. And also, we have not seen a reduction in price dispersion. So price dispersion has not decreased. Um, and so then the question is, why is this the case? So if we have this reduction in search frictions, why haven't we seen this in these two particular markets? And, uh, what some people have, um, uh, given us a possible explanation is that maybe people have become more selective over time. Okay, so if we become more picky, more choosy, both in terms of which job to accept, which good to buy, or which one to date, or to marry, then this could explain why even though search frictions are much lower, we're not seeing an increase necessarily in high-quality matches or, um, um, you know, how often they occur, or so on. So basically, what we're going to do here in, um, in this paper is we're going to start by assessing, uh, if effective search costs have actually gone down. And basically, because the way we see it is when we think about search frictions, there are two dimensions to it. One is, uh, search technology, which I think that in our minds, as I said, I think that there's very little doubt that there hasn't been any improvement in it, right? With all dating apps and, and so on. But then we have search costs. What are search costs? Have they really gone down or not? So we're going to look at, uh, this, uh, dimension and see what has happened over time. And we're going to specifically look at, you know, this question of, is it true that this improvement in the search technology has resulted in more high-quality matches? And have people actually become more selective over time? Have there been any changes in preferences? Okay, so we're going to kind of look at all of these things that some people have argued should be the answer to what has been observed in labor and product markets. We're going to look at it from the standpoint of, uh, marriage markets. So how are we going to tackle this? We're going to use a model of targeted search as in, uh, our joint work with Antonella and Anton, um, uh, published in 2020. And basically, we argue that this model is really, uh, well-suited to answer the questions that I just mentioned, mainly because in the model, we're going to have two-sided heterogeneity. So obviously, you know, like, all males and females are going to be heterogeneous. But more than that, they're going to have multi-dimensional attributes, okay? So each individual can have a long list of attributes that defines their type. And not only that, but in the model, as I'll show you in a moment, we're going to have the ability to observe how selective people are. Because in the model, the way people are going to target or are going to try to contact their, um, preferred matches, basically, is going to be in a probabilistic way. They're going to assign a probability of asking someone out, basically. And so we're going to be able to see how selective they are. Because if they assign a very high probability of, of, um, asking a particular person out, they're being very selective in the sense that it's like you know who's the person that you want to date or marry, and you're going to go for them. While if you don't assign a very high probability to any person, you're not being very selective. We're going more towards the random matching situation. And I'll be very specific, um, about this issue, okay? Uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention is, if, if you have any questions throughout the talk, feel free to interrupt. Uh, I'm, I'm very happy to, you know, answer any questions. Um, okay, so in terms of, uh, taking the model to the data and so on, what are we going to do? So we're going to aggregate the American Community Survey for the years 2008 to 2019. And we're going to use data on newly formed marriages and compute matching rates using income, skill, education, age, and race. So these are the observable, uh, characteristics that we're going to sort people by. And what we're going to do is that we're going to be able to estimate preferences and search costs. And we're going to be able to estimate search intensities, which as I mentioned before, these are going to reflect in our model how selective people are. Um, and after we've done this, we can compute the degree of assortativeness in matching. So how assortative is the matching, and how it has changed over time? And the degree of horizontality of preferences. So, um, uh, for, for those who are not familiar with this literature, we tend to separate preferences in two types of, or two families of preferences. One, a type of preference is vertical. When preferences are vertical, are a situation where everyone likes the same person, okay? So there's agreement on who would be your preferred match, and everyone would like to, uh, match with them. So, you know, um, the usual example that I gave is like, okay, I think we can all agree that dating Brad Pitt would be fantastic, okay? And so in that case, preferences are vertical. When preferences are horizontal, it means that every single person would like to date a different person. We cannot agree on who's our preferred match. And so each one of us has, you know, a preference for a different male, and males have a preference for a different, uh, female, okay? So preferences are horizontal. So we're able, we're going to be able to, um, see how, if preferences are more horizontal, more vertical, and how have they changed over the years as well. So what do we find? We find something that we think is quite interesting, which is, it turns out that relative matching rates have been stable over time. So even though we've seen this increase in, or improvement in search technology, we have not seen that relative matching rates, or matching rates controlling by quality, have, uh, increased, okay? And at the same time, it seems like search costs don't seem to have gone down. And so this is kind of, uh, the opposite of, you know, what we would have expected, which is, okay, we have this, you know, much better search, search technology through our phones, you know, like completely readily, readily available. And it hasn't really helped to improve much quality, and search costs have not gone down. Um, furthermore, even though there is a lot of heterogeneity in how selective people are, we have not seen that they have become more selective over time. So this hypothesis that people have been, um, posing in, uh, consumer and, um, labor markets, which is, well, we don't see a reduction in vacancies or unemployment, and we don't see price dispersion going down, and this could be because people have actually become more selective. Well, our model says in marriage markets, it doesn't seem like people have become more selective. And, uh, finally, preferences have become
I have a question.
Yes.
Sorry for interrupting. Uh, using this data set, you can follow the couples?
So we see every year who has married in the last 12 months. So we see newly formed marriages, that's what we see.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's not the same person followed through the years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, and so, uh, the last thing that we find is that preferences, uh, which in 2008 were somewhat vertical, have become even more vertical, okay? So kind of the agreement that people have on who is their favorite or their preferred partner has increased over time, okay? And so later, by the end, you know, I'll talk about these results more in the context of then, if this is what we're getting, If this is what we're getting, then what's going on, okay? How how come um? Search technology has not resulted in any of this, and I'll I'll kind of tell you guys what we've been. Uh thinking can be a, you know, possible answer to this. Okay, so let me um go directly to the model. So uh this is what we call a model of targeted search. It's called targeted because. It's not random matching and it's not directed um or um. Eh perfectly assorted it. And I'll uh I'll show you how, you know, people are actually going to target their preferred match. So think about, uh oh, and and one thing is that um I'll I'll mention later on how. Even though the type of eh search is targeted. Within our model, we're able to uh recover the two extremes of the literature. So we are able to recover. Eh eh random matching or the opposite eh extreme when you where you know exactly who's your best type and you're matched with them for sure. So imagine that we have M females and eh eh M males, sorry, and F females. And they're all heterogeneous in types. Males and females are going to simultaneously search for a match. And agents know their preferences over types, but they cannot locate them uh with certainty. They're going to be able to pay a search cost to choose the probability with which they will target each potential partner. And if they actually find a match, they're going to split the output of the match between them. So the best way to think about this situation is imagine that you um arrive at a bar. Okay, so it's Friday night, you go to a bar, and uh your goal for the night is to leave the bar with someone. How are you going to choose who to leave the bar with? So of course, there are certain um characteristics that you can observe and are easy to observe, right? So for example, looks are easy to observe, some types of behavior. Uh but then there are other things that are very hard to observe, or not very hard, but you have to uh exert some search effort, you know, in order to find out. So for example, you're interested in finding someone that has a certain level of education. Or imagine that you have a preference for a certain age group, uh et cetera, et cetera. So what are you going to do? What you're going to do is that you're going to spend the night chatting with people at the bar. And, you know, finding out information about them. So you're going to exert search effort. That's going to come at a cost because you're spending a certain time with each person. And by the end of the night, what you do is that you assign a probability of asking. Every single person outing that eh eh bar, okay? So you construct a discrete probability distribution, and everyone at the bar does that. And by the end of the night, you make a draw out of that distribution. And if there's mutual coincidence of interest, so uh you know, if the same eh you draw a person B and person B draws you. Then there's a match that is formed, okay? So the, in a nutshell, that's how it's going to uh to work, okay? These probabilities are search intensities, basically. So if you search very intensely for someone. That means that you've gathered a lot of information about that person, and you're pretty certain. That that person is the type that you're interested in. So you ha- assign a high probability such that when you draw out of your distribution. You have a higher chance of actually, you know, dating that person, you know, leaving the bar with that person, okay? Okay, so if we go more to the specifics, um what are, what's the population and agents of the model? So we have mu X females of type type X, so imagine we have X types, right? But they're going to be several, you know, of the same type. Same for males. Males are going to be of type Y, and they're going to be mu Y males. Those mu X and mu Y um males are identical, okay, to each other. They belong to the same type. It's just, you know, like a repeated prototype of the same person of that particular type, let's say. Agents then choose discrete probability distributions over times so types. So this distribution that I was just talking about for females, we're going to denote as P X of Y. And for males, Q Y of X, okay? So the P X of Y is basically the probability or the search intensity assigned by the female X. To a particular male Y. And Q Y X is the particular probability or intensity assigned by a particular male Y to a female X. So if the match is formed, there's going to be a match payoff uh denoted by phi of X Y. And this is be going to be split through a Nash bargaining. So females are going to receive an epsilon uh share of that eh phi. And males are going to receive eta of that phi, okay? Uh and finally, agents are going to face a marginal cost to exert that search effort. And that search cost is going to be denoted by theta. So the search cost of females is theta X, and the search cost of males. Is theta uh Y, okay? So this is more, you know, like graphically, how the model is going to work. So if we think about females, and we have here all the females of type one, which, as I said, there are mu one of those. All the females of type two, which there are mu two of those, until, you know, um. Eh the females of type F uh over here. Likewise, we have the males in the same way. So what each person is going to do is choose this probability distribution. So imagine that we take a female of type X, and we take specifically the one of identity one. That female is going to assign, you know, a probability of asking uh out male. One one, one two, one eh one mu one, and so on, okay? So this is a proper probability distribution, okay? So what are the searches going to be? They're going to be a function of search effort. And what are we going to assume? We're going to assume that search costs are going to be increasing in the distance between a prior uniform distribution. And the posterior distribution that is chosen by the individual. So imagine that here, the P squiggly that we have here is a uniform distribution. So you enter the bar and you have a completely uniform distribution over all the males or females eh at the bar. And then you're going to choose, uh in this, this is the case of the females, they're going to choose. Uh probability distribution, you know, that will just choose a particular search intensity or probability for each uh male. And the distance between these two, so how much you deviate from your uniform distribution. Is going to dictate how costly it is uh for you to search, or how much search effort you're exerting. So imagine for a moment that you choose a delta distribution. So imagine that you assign all the probability to only one single person at the bar. That's going to be incredibly expensive for you to do, right? Because the distance between these two probabilities is very large, so that's infinitely expensive. On the other hand, on the other extreme, if you decide not to exert any search effort. Then you can choose a uniform probability distribution here as well, so a distribution that is completely flat. And so these two are going to be exactly the same. What is the log of one? The log of one is zero. And so you're not going to be exerting any search effort whatsoever when you choose a probably a a distribution that is equal to your prior. Okay, so when you exert no search effort whatsoever, because you chose a uniform uh distribution. Know that that's the case where we go to the random matching eh extreme of the literature, okay? Because there you're not targeting anyone, there's exactly the same probability of being matched with anyone at the bar, okay? So uh just a technical detail, the costs are strictly increasing twice continuously differentiable and weakly complex functions of the search effort. And uh we consider a linear cost of search. So basically, the costs are just the theta, which is the marginal cost of search. Times the search effort that we exert, okay? Um. Okay, so um what's the meeting technology like in the model? So the meeting rate is going to depend on the strategies of the males and the females and a congestion function. So if you remember, I told you that when you're at the bar and you choose your discrete probability distribution. You make a draw out of it, and in order for there, for there to be a match that is formed, there has to be mutual coincidence of interest, okay? This function, this congestion function, takes care of that. There's there's going to be some situations that even though there is no mutual coincidence of interest. There's still going to be matches happening, okay? So but this is kind of a a a technical uh issue that unfortunately today I'm not going to have time to talk about. But this uh congestion function also is important for uh efficiency in equilibrium, okay? And I'll 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 mention, talk about this uh a little bit more eh in a couple of slides. Um, then what is the total number of matches formed between uh females uh of type X and males of type Y? Well, it's given by this expression here. So the matching rate is given by. How many uh females of type X there are, how many males of type Y. And then the probability distributions of the females and the probability distributions of the males. Times the congestion function, okay? So this determines the matching rate in our economy between, you know, uh female of type X and a male of type Y. So uh another detail is that agents take meeting rates as given. So they don't take into account the fact that what they decide as their um. Eh search intensities or probability distributions affects the congestion function. So they don't internalize. The effect that they had, their own search intensities have on the congestion function, okay? So that's um exogenous. Okay, so let's think about what um a female is going to solve. What's the problem of a female? And I want to mention that the problem of the male is exactly, you know, the same as the problem of the female. So the female of type X is going to want to maximize the expected eh income from forming the match. So what does that depend on? So that depends on the fraction of the surplus or or the payoff that they get, that they um. Appropriate, which is epsilon X Y. It depends on the probability that that particular male Y has assigned to them. Times the probability that they have assigned to that male Y, times the congestion function. Because if you notice this term here, and if you can see my mouse, this is the matching rate. So what you get is that your income is going to be the match from forming the match is going to be equal to the matching rate over here. Times what you actually get from the match, the utility you get from the match. And what are your costs, okay? So you're going to pay a marginal cost of exerting search effort theta X. Times your search effort, okay? And this is what we just looked at, which is going to be determined by the distance between the distribution that you choose. And um your eh prior, okay? So uh a matching or Nash equilibrium in this context is going to be a set of strategies for females. P X of Y and males Q Y of eh Q Y of X that solve the problem above. As I said, for the males is going to be analogous to this one. And what we get is that when we solve it in closed form, the equilibrium satisfies the following expression. So what really matters here is uh to note the following in terms of the the intuition of how the model works. So the optimal strategy for a female uh of type X. Is going to be dependent positively, of course, on how much eh of the payoff you get. From matching with a particular male Y, okay? So of course, if you see that there's a guy with whom you're going to get a much higher payoff, then that's going to drive you. To place a higher probability on that particular guy. Likewise, there is a strategic motive, okay? And that strategic motive comes from the fact that your own optimal uh choice. Or your own optimal intensity towards a particular male is also going to depend on the interests that they have in you. Because this Q star Y of X represents the probability or the search intensity that a particular guy Y. Has placed on you. Meaning that if you know that there is a guy at the bar who is particularly interested in you. Then that's going to encourage you to place a higher probability on him, because you know that with him, there's a higher chance of forming a match. Likewise, if you know that there's a guy that is like totally not interested in you. Then that's going to drive you to play, place a lower probability on that particular guy. So then note that the strategies have two motives. The strategy has a productive motive that is coming essentially from the fact. That you know what is the payoff that you get from matching from to with that particular guy. So think about, you know, like your preferences. You know what type of person you like, you know, you know, what are the characteristics you like in a person, what are their qualities, what are the defects that you dislike, and so on. That's going to determine this payoff here. But at the same time. As I mentioned before, yes, of course, I can decide that I really want to date Brad Pitt, but he's not going to be interested in dating me. So why would I place a very high probability on Brad Pitt if he's not going to want to date me? So in that sense, you know, I need to adjust my uh my decision. And place a higher probability on a guy that I know will actually want to uh date me or leave the bar with me at the end of the night, okay? So those are the two uh things that are going to be eh the two motives that are going to be driving my decisions. And finally, note that here we have the marginal cost of search. So obviously, the higher the cost of search. Or the higher the, you know, the marginal cost of exerting effort. Then the lower the probability that I'm going to choose, okay? Because it's more expensive to me to uh exert uh more more effort, okay? So then here in the numerator, these two are pushing my um eh probability up, and the cost is uh pushing it down. So um these are technical details, which I'm basically uh going to to skip for the sake of time. Um, basically, if, you know, in a nutshell, what is going on here is that, as I mentioned before. If that congestion function takes this specific form. Eh and you know, the the alpha here is between zero and one, we have search costs that are positive, we know and we can show that equilibrium exists is unique. Uh and the matching function exceeds constant returns to scale, okay? And uh we can also achieve eh efficiency through this particular um eh type of function. In the congestion part, in the, for congestion.
Can I ask a quick question about this?
Yes.
On the previous slide, is that the two point one of the surplus, is that kind of like a Hozier's type condition for this targeted search model?
The which one, sorry?
The surplus is split proportionally. This looks like a Hozier's type condition. But this is not a random search model, it's not, it's somewhere in between, so is that a right intuition or no?
Eh. So it goes in that direction. So it's analogous to the Hozier's condition in the sense that it balances out. The different eh direction of the externalities that we get in the model. Yes, so in the, you know, like so in a nutshell, that's, you know, that would be the answer. So it's not literally the Hozier's condition, but it. Alludes to that, because it's eh the one that balances out the externality such that inefficiency goes away. Yeah, so it's more, the intuition here is more of um, you know, the intuition of a holdup problem. Eh more than eh eh anything else. Um, okay. So um if we go to the estimation using um, you know, the matching data, as I mentioned before. We're going to use data from two thousand and eight to two thousand nineteen on newly formed marriages. And we compute matching rates by income, skill, education, age, and race. And uh what do we observe? So from the data, we're going to observe the numbers of searchers. So we know, you know, all the males and all the females uh that are searching, and we know the matching rates. So from this question of eh have you eh been married in the last twelve months? We know which ones have formed a match. And the identifying assumption that we're going to use is that we're going to assume that the search costs for males and females are the same. And the split of the match is just fifty fifty, okay? We could have assumed eh anything there, really. We're going to use maximum likelihood estimation, so we're just basically going to, um, you know, we were, given that we observe matches. And we. Yes.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, uh, do you consider only first marriages or?
So eh Anton can correct me if I'm wrong about this. So we do know who has been married before. Eh so in principle, we have. So in principle, we have that, that information. But the question that we use is the one that just asks you if you have been married in the last 12 months. So we haven't looked at divorce, for example. And that's something that we were talking about the other day with Anton about, you know, looking at that. But there might not be as many people in the sample that have been divorced. And so for now, these are just the ones that say, yes, I was married in the last 12, 12 months. Okay. Okay, so we use the, you know, the, the, the matching rate of the model and the data to minimize their distance. And the only thing is that we can uniquely identify the ratios of preferences to costs, which produce the empirically observed matching rates as an equilibrium of the model. So know that we can only identify the preferences relative to costs. We cannot separately identify preferences and costs, okay? So this is just the, the relative, this relative term, okay? So here's what we, here's what we get. So the relative matching rates. So what I want you to take away from here basically is, is the following. When we look at the matching rate and this controls for quality over time, both in the fifth percentile and the 95th percentile of the quality of matches, this has not changed over time. So what we would have expected is, you know, if search technology, you know, given that, given that we know that search technology has gotten so much better, what we would expect is here in the 95th percentile, the matching rate to go up, right? And the low quality matches to go down. So we would have expected this plot to be kind of fanning out instead of being constant as we observe it. So this is telling us that high quality matches are not really going up over time since 2008 to 2019, okay? So this is the first thing, yes, Cesar. Do you have a question?
What is the high quality matching? How do you define that again?
So this is when you match with your preferred match, with your high, your preferred matches.
Yeah, but in the data, what is that? Is it in the same education, income group?
Okay, yes, I'll, I'll show you how we, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll show you more on this exactly. But because we sorted on income, skills, age, race, I'll, I'll show you how that, how that looks more in detail in just a second. Yes.
Okay.
And this is good because this makes me think whether, you know, I should switch around the, the order of the slides, but okay, so.
Let me, let, let me answer the question now and you may postpone it. Because here's what I'm thinking, one is, you know, let's say just education, okay? And then, but maybe what, what, I don't know, Tinder is doing is that I'm, I'm, I'm looking for all the characteristics of people outside my group that, that I like. Before it was just like, you know, I, I, I'm a PhD economist, I hang around with PhD women. But, but now what this is doing, you see what I mean?
Yes, 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 yes. Oh, I know exactly what you mean, yes. I'll talk about this because I think that this is very much in line with what we're thinking is going on really. Okay, so the argument is going to be kind of our, you know, our hypothesis is kind of along those lines, okay? That of what you're thinking, I, I believe. So yes, let me show you the results and I'll talk about exactly that, which is, you know, I think that's what's going on. So when we look at the, you know, the surplus over cost, so this is the fee over the theta. And if we look at this relative to the median, note one thing which is interesting, which is it doesn't matter if we look at the 95th percentile or the fifth percentile, there's no trend. So this is also flat. What does this mean? Well, we know that the numerator here is the surplus of the match and we know that the denominator is the search costs. So the fact that this is flat tells us that neither one of them is really changing, okay? And so what we see is that, you know, like there doesn't seem to be evidence to think that, you know, matches are becoming more productive or that search costs are really going down, okay? Then this is a search effort. So when we, and this is, this we split, so here we have it for everyone, basically. Here we split it into the first panel is black Hispanic and the lower one is white Asian because, so it's split by the, you know, when we classify by race because they looked, it was like I mentioned where they looked more different. And what we see is that however, you know, even though there's a lot of disparity in terms in the search effort per se, over time, there's no trend either. It is still true that females consistently place way more effort than males in finding a match, but this hasn't changed really over time, okay? So again, there's no trend and that's what's really to take from here, the no trend part. Okay, so this is more related to what Cesar was asking, okay? So here, this will tell you a little bit more of how we're splitting the pie, basically. So we have, this is kind of a very complicated plot to look at, I think. But I think we haven't found, I mean, this is kind of the best way that we found to kind of show these results. So the first part is the, is the level of income. So high income or very high income, the second one is education and then the third one is the race. What matters from here is what the arrows are showing and the thickness of the arrows. So here what we have is every single bin that we have constructed. So we have 30 characteristics for the males and 30 for the females, okay? And they all match with each, with each other. And 30 combinations, right, of the, of the income, skill, age, race. And so the thickness here basically tells you who is, who are they placing the highest probability into? So the selectivity, basically. So when we have these very thick arrows here or lines, this means that these people are being very selective. When they're thin, they're not being that selective because even the highest probability that they have on their distribution is not that high. This is what is telling, this is telling you. So I don't expect you to see much out of this plot but to kind of hold, you know, visually how it looks like. And this is how it looks when it change, when we compare two periods of time. So the one on the left is the 2008, 2011 estimation and the one on the right is the 2016, 2019. And what we think is relevant from here is they don't look very different, okay? So if you just kind of take a quick look at each one of them, the shape and everything looks fairly different in the sense that, and what that tells us is really that the degree of selectivity is not higher in 2016, 19 compared to 2008, 2011, okay? So again, this is who looks at home, okay? And when we saw it by the different characteristics. Okay, I'm going to move and then we can talk with Cesar if he has questions, but I want to wrap up because I don't want to take extra time from what I have. Then finally, we can construct our horizontality index basically to know whether preferences, as I mentioned at the beginning, are horizontal or are vertical. What this says in a nutshell is just that we can look at how many different males or females have the higher probability placed on them. So basically, the horizontality index tells us that if every single male has assigned the highest probability to a different female and likewise, a female has placed, every female has placed the highest probability on a different male, then those preferences are horizontal because everyone is choosing a different person. They cannot agree on who is the best, you know, like the top person that they would like to date. On the contrary, if preferences are more vertical, that see, that means that everyone can agree on someone, okay? They all look at the same exact person, like the example that I gave you for Brad Pitt. So I'll show you the results for that. So the results for that are here in, in the yellow line. So this is the only result where we see that there is some trend. So horizontality has been going down over time, meaning that preferences have become even more vertical over time, okay? So this is where, you know, people tend to be more in agreement about who they like, who they ideally like or who they would like to marry. And so I'm going to skip this on, on, on inequality, but I want to make some final remarks and this is now directly speaking to what Cesar was saying. And so basically what we're thinking is, okay, if search technology has clearly improved, right? So now we have Tinder, Bumble, you know, et cetera, all these dating apps. Then why is it the case that search costs have not gone down and the number of high quality matches has not increased, right? Because this is what we find from our estimation. And we see this and at the same time, we see that an increasing, increasing selectivity is not the answer. So what's going on? So we tend to think that maybe the real constraint is really our own capacity to sort through potential matches. Because one thing is, of course, we now have access to tons of information and, you know, like at the palm of our hand, we have access to, you know, many people that we can potentially date. But because we have access to these many more candidates, we need to sort through many of those. And the thing is that, you know, we have capacity constraints in terms of our ability to sort through all those people. And then we have the issue of, well, we have a lot more candidates, but we still have to identify the same things that are not observable as they were before. So in that case, you know, there's, we, we shouldn't expect, you know, a dramatic improvement, you know, in our ability to sort or to identify the proper matches or our preferred matches. This would be the case in labor and product markets as well. And finally, the access to more candidates could have aligned preference and made them more vertical. And this is maybe more in the line of what Cesar was, was mentioning, right? Which is, right before, we went to college, for example, and so you met only the people that were in your college. Because you're now on Tinder, then Tinder gives you access to absolutely everyone, let's say, you know, around your city. And so your pool of candidates has largely increased. And because the pool of candidates has largely increased, now, you know, some people that I could not have met before because I was only looking in my college, now they're present on Tinder, but they're present for everyone. So everyone has access to all those same candidates. So this could be a reason why preferences seem to be aligning more and more over time, you know, because the horizontality index is going down. So this means that because, you know, we have a lot more information, we all have access to the same people, we may, you know, start liking more and more the same type of people. And I think that maybe this is more towards what, you know, I don't know if this is what you were thinking, Cesar, but and so then in a nutshell, we think that it's, you know, it seems like it doesn't really matter if search technology has really, you know, improved drastically over time. We as human beings, you know, when it comes to the marriage or the dating market, still have to distill the same information in our, in our, in our minds and we have capacity constraints and time limitations. And, you know, like the fact that we can, we have many more candidates only makes it more complicated because we have to sort through many more people in order to identify the right ones. So that's what we, we tend to think that that, that is going on basically. And it expands to all markets, not only marriage and dating, but labor and product markets. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Paulina. We have a question from the Q and A. You kind of answered a little bit with this final, final comments, but I will read here. I have read some inadactable evidence about the following partner in dating app. Typically, in average, a woman is contacted more frequently and have more matches than a man. How can this can be rationalized? Driven by difference in certain effort or searching costs? If it's a dating app, then seem like the search costs asymmetric. Asymmetric preference, perhaps? There's an adductor evidence rather than some regulated though, thank you.
Okay, Anton is answering there. So let me, so the thing is that I guess there are two issues, you know? I, I can answer that question, you know, out of my, just my own priors, I guess. Because we don't have data on dating apps, that's the problem. We have not been able to get data from the dating apps and we've tried a lot. So we only have the census data on marriages. And, you know, like there could be slight differences, right? In the behavior when it comes to marriage than when it comes to just, you know, dating, which could also be informal, right? And but about the asymmetry? No, I mean, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think that the, the, there's anything asymmetric in the dating apps, but I think that it's a matter of, I guess I'm not sharing my screen anymore. But when you look at the search effort of males and females, right? What we see is that the female's search effort is higher than the male's. And that would be completely in agreement with what we see in, in the behavior in dating apps in terms of the number of messages, right? Because males tend to send way more messages to women. And so this is an indicator, I think, of a flatter distribution, right? Because it's, they're not being very selective, they just basically shoot messages everywhere. It's kind of the law of large numbers and see which one works out. While females don't do that, but females do exert way more search effort and they're very specific as of where, to whom they really reply and respond, right? So I think that is reflected in the marriage market as well in terms of the behavior of, of males and, and females. And the other question was, so it was about the asymmetry, right, in the search costs?
Yes.
Am I missing any detail of the, of the question?
Don't think so, I think you explained.
Okay, there's another question here. You, yeah, you assume that people observe types. Can I think about types as a signal of what I care about rather than what I really care about? Okay, so I don't know what, 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 what you mean by that. But types are, are literally the characteristics that define a person, right? The thing is that they're not all observable, right? And so when you know your distribution over types and that's an assumption of the model, so you know exactly what you like in a person, then the question is where to find them. And so that's what the search effort entails, which is you go trying to find out information about every single person who's out there to try to gather out of your list. You know, it's like imagine you have like literally that list of, oh, this is what I want in a person. And you go, you know, you know, ticking, you know, the marks in terms of, oh, this is what I want, this is not what I want, and so on. So that's how we think about, about it.
Can, can I ask a question? Actually, I have a suggestion when I asked you about if you consider only first marriages or remarriage. Maybe the, the, the preferences are different when you consider first marriages compared to remarriage.
Yes, I think that's
Suggestion to compare the results if they are the same. And my question is about the epsilon, how epsilon is defined?
About the what, sorry?
The, your parameter epsilon, how is epsilon defined? I, 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 I think I skipped.
So here we are assuming that the split is half and half. So let's say if the payoff is 10, you get five and then the male gets five. So it's just how much of the total payoff you get and we assume that it's half and half, right? And we estimate the, the payoff itself.
Okay, you don't, okay, you don't have any bargaining process?
No, so the bargaining is not really taking place. I mean, this is a reduced form of thinking about a situation where on average you're expected to get half of the payoff. Some people are going to be better at bargaining than others. So some people are going to get more, some people are going to get less, but in expected terms, you're going to get 50%, so that's kind of what is
But if you have, for example, you have more people in us, in a determining, in a certain characteristic, for, for example, more men, have more women with college plus education than men. For, for example, more men, have more women with college plus education than men. Maybe the share of men should be a little bit higher than women's. Because they are they're, they're, they are in le- in less numbers.
But the payoff has nothing to do with the number of people in the economy, right? So it's just about, you know, you know that if you're matched with any specific guy, you know exactly how much you would get out of that match. So in that, in the case, yeah, so what you're thinking about is, okay, this, this woman with very high utility, you know, probably their utility of being matched with a lower education guy is going to be lower. So it's, they're not going to target that match very intensely.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Can I ask a, a, a question following up with a, I think, a previous one and something that I said during your talk? Um. Here's a story, which I have no idea whether it's true or not. But people might actually be dating more, given that the search costs are down, looking for someone that's not necessarily in these narrowly defined groups because that's what we observe. But the matches may end up being better quality matches, but it's just that we can't see it. Maybe one thing you can see is whether these matches are getting divorced or not. So is it the case that people, you know, the, the hazard rate of these matches is, is, is lower? The survival rate is higher than the other ones. Because maybe, you know, it's like, you know, I used to date, I don't know, one person a year, now I date ten because it's so easy. And I, I mean, it should get a better match. Because what you have, as you said, obviously the dating, even your examples, like you go to a bar, you go, but, but the data you have is married, which is a much more uh, uh, longer term thing. So maybe the dating thing is more, it's a, it's a, it's a more tight market, it's a thicker market. But what you observe is something, an outcome of that, you know what I mean?
Yes.
And may, maybe looking at, maybe looking at divorce might, might tell you something about.
Mm-hmm. No, I've always thought about that. So we don't know, we cannot look at that because we cannot follow the same person. So we don't know when a marriage is formed, you know, for how long it lasts and if it ends up in divorce or not. That's something that we don't see in the data, unfortunately. So we don't have a way of knowing what's the hazard rate or anything like that.
I think, I think on SIP, you have retrospective marital histories.
Where?
SIP, Survey of Income Participation, something, something? S I P P. Um, so maybe, you know, um, in L S Y would suck because it'd be a small and zero and one cohort, right? But um, but maybe if there's a right SIP and it has a retrospective thing, then you know when that person got married, whether that was forced, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know if the timing is going to line up well with, you know, the timing that you want, but maybe you want to take a look.
No, I mean, if we were able to get that data like that, it would be great. I think it will, well, I mean, our model doesn't have a separation rate, right? I mean, because the, the model is a one-shot model, right? It's not dynamic. Um, I mean, in principle, we have played with this, so we have, um, you know, you know eh, changed the setup such that we're getting through dynamics and so on. Eh, but then the estimation part and all of that is way more complicated, right? Um, but I do think that eh, this issue of eh, I mean, so what Lorena was mentioning about probably preferences are different for people that are remarrying, that is the first marriage. I mean, that's for sure something super interesting and it's very likely to be true. And eh, what Cesar says about the, the, the duration, I think that that's eh, definitely eh, I mean, I possibly, I guess that I guess that what you're, what you're saying is over time, because you can try out so many different people. Then when you make the decision to marry, it's going to be a more solid decision because you're going to be more certain about the person you're marrying, instead of, you know, like many.
That's my reading out of your model.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, 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 exactly. Um. Yeah, I mean, again, it's a one-shot thing, right? So it's not eh, it's not dynamic, but um, I guess that eh, it's eh, yeah, eh, eh, this would only speak about how much time you spend swiping, I guess, on Tinder, right? To make a decision of, you know, who to like, I guess, right? Eh, or with what probability, right? You're going to like someone eh, there. And, and I mean, and for sure, it's different in, in dating markets than in marriage markets, but um, but at the end of the day, kind of the, you know, like the, the process of how the matches form is the same. I guess that it matters less, obviously, if it's just for a date than if it's to marry, but um. Eh, yeah, I wish we could get data on, on, on dating apps, you know, we, we have not been able to get our hands on it. And, but uh, I don't know if it's because, you know, it's like the Fed has the one been trying to get that data, you know, and they're like, we don't want to give our data to the Federal Research Bank, you know? So I don't know, yeah, that'd be, that'd be really good to get.
Lucieni, can I, can I ask a question for Cesar?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Cesar, uh, i- in, in your model, in your uh, parameters, you, you consider the, the transmission rate, one person infected will transmit to two or three people. It's the beginning of the COVID transmission, I think. How would you, how would your results change? Uh, given the, the, the transmission of new variants such as Delta?
Yeah, so here's, let me, let me tell you what I want to do that I have not done, okay? Um, I have, I have the following paper that's completely done in my mind, but it doesn't exist yet. Which is COVID, vaccines and variants. Because we have like all, all of these, um, uh, in each country, I guess, we started with different uh, 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 priority groups, right? Someone started with older people, blah, 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 blah. Philippines started with young people. And their ideas like, you know, these are the guys that go out, like in my model, should we start with them? Um, so what I wanted to do is like try out in our model different, you know, partial vaccines over time, but as more and more people get um, get sick, the uh, the transmission of the, the vaccine will increase over time. So it's kind of like, you know, it mutates as more and more people get it, which I think it's, so, so you would have like this, you know, trade off of like, yo, you really want to help the old people. On the other hand, the young people are getting infected more, who should you vacc- vaccinate first? So this is the model that exists in my head, the paper. The paper's complete, it's a hundred percent complete in my head, it just needs to be put on paper. Now, your question is more like in my model, which is not a steady state, but that, that thing is fixed. Um, how would that change? Now, this would be a, a racehorse now. It would be a racehorse between uh, more people getting infected, you're talking about the R not, right? More people getting infected versus um, eh, eh, as, as the disease becomes more problematic, people are taking more precautions. So the question is which, which horse is going to win this race? And, and I don't know the answer. So this is very easy to do in our model, but I think the, the more interesting question would be this time path of, of, of infectiousness changing over time. Like, you know, the del- the, the beta comes along and it's more, so if, if we don't curb this, it starts to get, and, and this is like time changing over, it's like changing over time. I think this would be pretty cool. I just don't have the time to do it. Uh, but yeah, but, but, but the, the simple thing, it would be very easy to do, it depends on this relative effect, which I don't know the answer to.
Can I ask you a question, Cesar, about yours?
Sure.
So I was curious, uh, as of why you guys chose the policy to be to completely eliminate uh, the virus, you know, like to go with the extreme as in, you know, let's say Australia or New Zealand, because eh, I mean, in the long run, you know, given that this is a dynamic thing, I, I'm not sure that would be the ideal thing. Because at some point, we do want herd immunity as much as we can, minimizing the number of deaths. And, and so, you know, because this result of, at the end of the day eh, the lockdown should be stronger for younger people than older people and so on. Hinges on that, right? On the fact that you want to completely eliminate that. And so I was just curious, why did you guys decide to go that route instead of saying, well, we don't want to completely eliminate that? We have to, you know, like, smooth it out such that we get at some point herd immunity, you know, minimizing deaths. And
Yeah, so um, just to be clear, we didn't choose that, so thi- thi- this was the planner, or that's the optimal lockdown that a planner would choose.
Ah, that was the optimal, sorry, I missed that.
That is the optimal lockdown. Wha- now, the question is why would a planner choose that? Uh, in our world, it would be because uh, there is a vaccine, it's a perfect vaccine that comes a year and a half. So your intuition about herd immunity, yeah, we want to prevent uh, this thing from happening again. While herd immunity is like by assumption achieved in our framework, a year and a half down the road because everyone gets vaccinated then. Um, so we don't have this problem and that's, and then the planner wants to go uh, uh, for, uh, for the no COVID strategy. Two other things, could we run uh, the optimal lockdown in a situation without a vaccine, in which we really need to get to herd immunity without the help of a vaccine? In principle, we could, um, it would just run forever in our server. Uh, the other thing is that, other than the optimal lockdown, uh, the, the result that you mentioned about the locking the young and not the old, we did like some stylized, instead of the optimal lockdown, we did several constellations of like stricter, uh, milder, longer, shorter lockdowns. In locking the old only, they hate that. It's never, it's never welfare improving for the old to lock them, at least we didn't find. Neither in the optimal lockdown nor in all of the constellation of the policy in which you lock the lo- you lock the old, you know, like the young roam free.
How, did you choose the Pareto weights? On the different?
Is the relative uh, size of the two groups.
Is the relative what?
The relative sizes of the, it's a utilitarian planner and the Pareto weights are eighty percent for the young, twenty percent for the old. This is the relative size and shares in the population of the different groups.
Okay.
I think we don't have any, any questions. So I'm gonna close the session. So thank you so much for the presentations. Uh, both papers are very, very interesting. And for different reasons, uh, as Paulina said, they are completely different, but they are very, very eh, interesting. So thank you so much for your presentation. And I hope we can see the papers published very soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the invitation.